We do have a presentation before we close out on this public transportation. Christie.
Hi.
Hi.
So what's a little different this year about us applying for funds? Every year you see the same application for FTA, which is federal money, STA, which is state money, JRC money, which is the night bus you see running around from 5:30 until midnight taking people to work, New Freedom Tuesday and Thursday nights to get disabled people out and about. I'm also applying for JRC money for Wilton. This prior, this money prior was under the ICAP handle. So it's a little different this year. You see a bigger JRC number. And the other difference is that instead of ICAP money was funded at operate, at an operating level at 100% and JRC money is only funded at 50%. So that's, you know, a shift in how we've, how we've operated and I'm just here to answer questions.
Council, any questions for Christie?
So if your funding is only 50% for, that's the JRC, the Wilton stuff.
Right.
Uh, where's the rest of the funds coming from?
Well, part of, when we had the discussion at budget time, part of what drives how much state and federal funding we get is how many miles, how many revenue miles we operate and how many rides we provide. So it's a formula. So I contacted DOT and said, okay, so if we take Wilton out of the formula, where, you know, where is the money going to be? How much money will we be down next year? And the estimate was about $17,000 that we would receive less in FTA and STA and that federal and that state money. The city would end up making, making up the gap. I mean, that's, that's why I'm here. We can also raise rates a little bit. Wilton's the best thing going. They can ride to Wilton for a dollar a ride. Last year we did 3,277 rides. I rode with everybody on the bus and said, you know, I think you can anticipate that, you know, the council would propose a rate increase. I don't think $2 is a ride, $2 a ride is out of, you know, out of the fair playing field. It would, it would raise a little bit of revenue. Well, it would double another $3,300 if we were on target to last, from last year. This year our rides seem to be up a little bit and we'll probably end up with about 4,000 rides this year from Wilton.
Anyone else, council? Thank you, Christie.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Mark, need a second?
Second.
Second Osama. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries seven zero. Item number six, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted upon by one motion. There will be no sep, no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Those would be, uh, items eight, A through C, 12, A through C, and bills. An asterisk, approval of attached bills for approval totaling $1,201,276.99 as well as receipt summaries and journal entries for January 2012 is subject to the approval of any related agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, Tom, and a second?
Second.
Second, uh...
I heard a little voice down this way.
Jeanette, okay, thank you. Uh, any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item number seven. Public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for state and federal transit funds for fiscal year 2012, 2013. Each year, the city is required to submit a request to the state of Iowa for federal and state assistance to support the city's Musca Bus operation. As a part of the city's application, it is anticipated the city would receive $249,873 in federal assistance, $161,424 in state assistance, $9,027 for the new Freedom program, and $44,093 for the JARC program. Prior to any formal application being made, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Uh, we do have a presentation before we close out on this public transportation. Christie. That'd be Christie Corby, by the way.
Hi.
Hi.
So what's a little different this year about us applying for funds? Every year you see the same application for FTA, which is federal money, STA, which is state money, JRC money, which is the night bus you see running around from 5:30 until midnight taking people to work, New Freedom Tuesday and Thursday nights to get disabled people out and about. I am also applying for JRC money for Wilton. This prior, this money prior was under the ICAP handle. So it's a little different this year. You see a bigger JRC number. And the other difference is that instead of, ICAP money was funded at operate, at an operating level at 100% and JRC money is only funded at 50%. So that's, you know, a shift in how we've, how we've operated and I'm just here to answer questions.
Council, any questions for Christie?
So if your funding is only 50% for, that's the JRC, the, the Wilton stuff.
Right.
Uh, where's the rest of the funds coming from?
Well, part of, when we had the discussion at budget time, part of what drives how much state and federal funding we get is how many miles, how many revenue miles we operate and how many rides we provide. So it's a formula. So I contacted DOT and said, okay, so if we take Wilton out of the formula, where, you know, where is the money going to be? How much money will we be down next year? And the estimate was about $17,000 that we would receive less in FTA and STA and that federal and that state money. The city would end up making, making up the gap. I mean, that's, that's why I'm here. We can also raise rates a little bit. Wilton's the best thing going. They can ride to Wilton for a dollar a ride. Last year we did 3,277 rides. I rode with everybody on the bus and said, you know, I think you can anticipate that, you know, the council would propose a rate increase. I don't think $2 is a ride, $2 a ride is out of, um, you know, out of the fair playing field. It would, it would raise a little bit of revenue. Well, it would double another $3,300 if we were on target to last, from last year. This year our rides seem to be up a little bit and we'll probably end up with about 4,000 rides this year from Wilton.
Anyone else, council? Thank you, Christie.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Mark, need a second?
Second.
Second Osama. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries seven zero. Also under public hearing, item B, the public hearing, this public hearing concerns the proposed West Hill area sanitation and storm sewer separation project, phase one. The city is under a federal EPA consent order to separate all storm and sanitary sewers by 2024. Over the past 20 years, the city has been separating storm and sanitary sewers in the community through the use of the local option sales tax. In order to complete the process, a very large and significant separation project of the city's West Hill area must now be undertaken. The project will be done in phases with phase one beginning this spring. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Close.
Osama, motions to close.
Second.
Your honor, we do have a presentation by the Stanley staff on this project at this time, if you'd like to listen to it or hear it.
Absolutely, Randy, thank you. Mike, you have the floor.
I'll move quickly, mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the public hearing for the West Hill Sewer Separation Project. Steve asked me if I was just going to skip something on these blank pages. There's actually another slide. And as the, as the mayor read, this is phase one. Before I get very deeply into this, I want to mention that, besides this public hearing, we're also going to have two separate public informational meetings for property owners.
Mike, could you, could you stand behind the podium there?
Sure.
Thank you.
So there'll be two more public informational meetings. One will be with the, more the downtown stores and the rest of them, or the, or the second one will be with property owners. And I see we have a property owner here tonight that's going to care some about this project on it. Uh, as we mentioned already, the US EPA, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, EPA has mandated the elimination or treatment of combined sewer overflows, commonly known as CSOs, into our national waters. And Musketeen's been working diligently for many years, eliminating CSOs by separating their storm and sanitary sewers. Musketeen has signed a consent order with US EPA requiring elimination of all CSOs by the year 2024. And the West Hill areas, we're calling it, is the last remaining section of the city where sewers still require separation. This figure is basically West Hill and Musketeen. And it's kind of bounded on Cedar Street, Foyam, uh, Kenler, and Fletcher on the west end. And this is Lucas Street and about Third Street down here. And one of the key sewers in this project is the proposed 24-inch west side interceptor that will start down here on, at alley two on Sycamore, jog over to Cedar Street, out Cedar, and eventually all the way out to where intercepts the creek proper on the other side of Foyam. We've decided to break this project into a base bid and an alternate bid, just because the entire phase one project is, is getting pretty expensive relative to the cost estimate that's been prepared. So what I show here in red, if you can all see the red, is what's in the base bid of phase one. And the green is the base bid, or the alternate bid for phase one. And the contractor is required to submit a bid, both the base bid and the alternate bid. And we'll have a choice whether we accept just the base bid or the base plus the alternate bid. Can't, we can't just, uh, we can't just award the alternate bid to a contractor. The plan all along has been to complete the West Hill separation work in four phases, but it now seems more prudent to break this work down into, and we're not sure yet, six, seven, eight, maybe even nine phases on it. But again, this is the first phase. And there are, there is a schedule for this work. Tomorrow, uh, tomorrow we'll, we'll mail out plans and specification, specifications to prospective bidders. Then on March 30th, there'll be a pre-bid meeting that all the contractors or all the plan holders will be invited to. And then the bid date is April 13th, just about a month from now. And the council will award this project, if everything goes as planned, on April 19th. We'll issue a notice to proceed on May 4th. And completion is anticipated by October 2013. Plans and specifications, there's actually plans and specifications on the table over here. But what I really wanted to mention is that those, that set of plans and specifications is going to be at the Public Works Department if anyone wants to stop in and review those. I should mention one more feature on this project. We're not actually putting, this is the deep wooded ravine out at the end of Sixth Street. This is the locust that runs all the way over to Eighth Street. And eventually we have to put a large storm sewer and a 10-inch sanitary sewer through this ravine. But those aren't going to go in, in phase one. But in phase one, we will be doing some filling down in this ravine. We want to, we want to do some filling before we put the new pipes down there. So I'm mentioning that for the sake of one of the property owners. There is a cost estimate for these two, for the alternate, for the base bid and the alternate bid. And base bid's 4.8 million and the alternate bid is 3.5 million. And if, depending on how the bids come in, we'll have the opportunity to kind of pick and choose how much of this we want to go with. It'd be nice if bids came in low enough that we could build both the base and the alternate bid, but we don't know at this point. So happily entertain any questions that anyone has. Anything I didn't mention, Randy?
There are a lot of specifics that go with this project that eventually will come up and will be addressed. Mike's already commented about, um, the scheduled meetings and meetings that we need to schedule with the businesses and homeowners along Cedar Street and a second public meeting with the people on Sixth Street to let them know what's going on. Uh, there are going to be parking issues as we'll be disrupting the downtown area, going across the parking lot across from City Hall. I believe as many as 67 spaces will be displaced during this construction time. Nancy has been working with Stanley staff on how we can work our way through that and accommodate the people as best as we can. We have discussed the possibility of starting this project not necessarily at alley number two and tearing up this parking lot until after Great River Days because riverfront parking will be, uh, taken out for Great River Days. And so there is possibility we will, uh, start that portion of the project after the end of July. So those are some of the specifics that we are continuing to work on and we'll keep you informed as we go along with it.
Council, anyone have any more questions for Randy or Mike?
Just in general terms, what are some of the reasons for more phases?
The primary reason, it's, it's all funding, Scott.
Okay.
It's what we can afford. We'd like to be able to pay for as much of this project, other ones on local option tax as we possibly can before we have to go out and, and get a RL app or bond or whatever. So the, the phases make it better for us to pay our way through it.
And still meet the 2024 or at least the extension or something?
We, 2024 is the deadline EPA has put on us. We will, uh, you will have an opportunity to review that the closer you get to 2024. But I would not be a bit surprised that we request an extension to that and more than likely we'll receive one as we show progress of accomplishing what EPA wants us to do.
Scott, there's one, very quickly, there's one more issue involved with breaking this down into more phases. If, if the construction cost gets too high in any one of these phases, we begin to eliminate some of the smaller contractors that can't bond for a larger project like that. So it benefits those smaller construction operations also, reducing the size of some of these phases.
Anyone else, council? We have a motion and a second on the floor to close this portion of the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries seven zero. Council, moving on to item eight, paragraph D. Presented for city council's consideration is the request for use of city property for the Musketeen area farmer's market from May 5th, 2012 through October 27th, 2012. Market will be open from 6:00 AM to noon and will be in lot number seven at the corner of Third and Cedar Streets. Market will stay at this location until West Hill Sewer Project begins and it, it will then be moved to lot number eight behind the Batterson Building. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second?
Second, your honor.
Osama made the motion, second by Bob. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item number nine for the mayor, I have nothing. Item 10, planning and zoning, Steve, anything? Okay. Item number 11 from the city administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the 2012 addition to the consolidated urban renewal area as it relates to the RL Fridley Theaters Development Project. Certain real, certain real property situated in the consolidated Musketeen urban renewal area was designated as a tax increment district. The city is now interested in increasing the size of the tax increment district by adding additional property that is related to the above-mentioned development project. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom?
Second.
Second, Jeanette. Council, discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a voice vote. We'll start, or roll call, I'm sorry. We'll start with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item C, presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance on a proposed rezoning request within the city of Musketeen. The request has been received from RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated to rezone a 15.029 acre area located at the southwest corner of the Mulberry Avenue-US Highway 61 bypass intersection from R1 residential to S3 mixed use. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Scott? And a second? Tom? And a second? Mike? Motion carries seven zero. Item E, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for state and federal transit funds for fiscal year 2012 and 2013. Each year, the city is required to submit a request to the state of Iowa for federal and state assistance to support the city's Musca Bus operation. As a part of the city's application, it is anticipated the city would receive $249,873 in federal assistance, $161,424 in state assistance, $9,027 for the new Freedom program, and $44,093 for the JARC program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Bob?
Second.
Second by Osama. Roll call vote, we'll begin with Bob.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item F, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the plan, specifications, form a contract, cost estimate, and setting the date for receipt of bids for the project identified as rehabilitate airfield pavements at the municipal airport. The project will involve the repair of joint seal damage, corner spalling, am I pronouncing that correctly, Steve? Corner spalling, joint spalling, holes, linear cracking, durability cracking, scaling, and failed patching. Repair techniques will include joint cleaning and sealing, crack routing and sealing, partial depth PC concrete patching, and full depth PC patching. The engineer's estimate for this project is $121,000. If approved, the project will receive 90% federal funding with a 10% local share. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 5th, 2012 at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom, and a second?
Second, your honor.
Second, Osama? No discussion? Council?
Well, maybe any leftover material we can use for the fire station maybe or something.
Well, that wasn't a cheap shot, was it?
No, 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 that's just...
So roll call vote, ladies and gentlemen?
I have to save money, that's all.
I see. And I know that about you. We'll start with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item G, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the plan, specifications, form a contract, cost estimate, and setting the date for receipt of bids for the project identified as rehabilitate airfield pavements at the municipal airport. The project will involve the repair of joint seal damage, corner spalling, am I pronouncing that correctly, Steve? Corner spalling, joint spalling, holes, linear cracking, durability cracking, scaling, and failed patching. Repair techniques will include joint cleaning and sealing, crack routing and sealing, partial depth PC concrete patching, and full depth PC patching. The engineer's estimate for this project is $121,000. If approved, the project will receive 90% federal funding with a 10% local share. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 5th, 2012 at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom, and a second?
Second, your honor.
Second, Osama? No discussion? Council?
Well, maybe any leftover material we can use for the fire station maybe or something.
Well, that wasn't a cheap shot, was it?
No, 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 that's just...
So roll call vote, ladies and gentlemen?
I have to save money, that's all.
I see. And I know that about you. We'll start with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item H, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2013 Resource Enhancement and Protection, REAP... of a fiscal year two thousand and thirteen Resource Enhancement and Protection, R.E.A.P., Historic Resource Development Project, H.R.D.P. grant application. The Muscatine Historic Preservation Commission is requesting approvals to submit an H.R.D.P. application to the State Historical Society of Iowa to help finance four proposed neighborhood reconnaissance surveys. The amount of the grant requet, the amount of the grant request is approximately seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. The H.P.C. has raised approximately nine thousand one hundred dollars to meet the required match. Additional, an additional one hundred dollars is being requested from the city through an in-kind contribution for copying, postage, and other minor office expenses. Staff time to complete the grant application, add administer any grant award is also being requested. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Mark, can I need a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Scott? Discussion, counsel. It's also is a roll call vote, starting with Mark?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item I, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting the patent for the former National Guard Armory property located at fourteen twenty-one Park Avenue. In September two thousand and seven, the state of Iowa was granted a long-term lease of seven, lease of seventeen point two seven six acres of real estate located in the southeast portion of the Musk, the municipal airport in exchange for the former National Guard Armory property and buildings located at fourteen twenty-one Park Avenue. Joint readiness facility for both the Army Reserves and the Iowa National Guard has been completed. It would now be appropriate for the city council to accept the patent for the property at fourteen twenty-one Park Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Motion by Jeanette?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Tom? Discussion, anyone? Also is a roll call vote, starting with Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott, or, I'm sorry, Mark?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item J, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the disposal of the former National Guard Armory property at fourteen twenty-one Park Avenue. The patent for the property has been received and accepted by the city council. It is staff's recommendation that city council authorize the city administrator to take the necessary steps to dispose of the property. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Bob, and I need a second?
Second.
Second, Mark? Discussion, counsel.
Randy, do you know what the process is going to be related to this, or?
Steve does.
Steve?
I would ask Steve to comment.
Those that remember how we handled the Lincolnshire property, this will follow the same process. There'll be a sealed bid. We'll open it. There is a minimum threshold bid amount that has to be approved. If they meet that requirement, then we will go into an open bidding process with a successful bidder following that, that step.
So there's a threshold amount, or just a number of qualified bidders?
There's a, there is a minimum base bid, acceptable base bid, that has to come for it to be considered eligible.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Steve, are you aware, are there any interested parties at this time?
We've had contact from a number of different folks representing a wide range of potential uses. But we really haven't talked about dollars at this point. We had a, as you recall, council authorized an appraisal of that real estate when we initially were looking at what we might do with it. And the base bid reflects that value, so we'd like to get out of it what we, what we can. And if there's more than one interested buyer and they want to bid it up, we're going to accommodate them.
Anyone else, counsel? We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. We'll start with Bob.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item K, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution concerning the proposed sale of the former National Guard Armory property at fourteen twenty-one Park Avenue. The sale of this property will be conducted by a closed bid auction and convenience will be by special warranty deed. The closed bid auction will take place at ten a.m. on April eleventh, two thousand and twelve in the lower level conference room at City Hall. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom, and a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Scott? Discussion, counsel? I think Steve probably filled us in everything that we need. It's a roll call vote, starting with Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item L, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve change order number four for the South End Fire Station project. This change order in the amount of five thousand sixty-one dollars covers miscellaneous items that need to be done. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama, and I need a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Phil? Any discussion, counsel?
What's the current status of the walls?
Steve, you want to come up and bring us up to date?
The, the status of the walls are the four sections on the south side by the railroad tracks were replaced, and that let them go ahead with, with the construction on the project. So those are replaced towards the end of this month. The rest of what we discuss with the patching and the staining and the water sealing will take place towards the end of this month. So they'll have both contractors, they'll have the patching contractors on site, and they'll also have the stainers and the water sealers on site that will work together. So they'll mix the patch, put it in there, make sure that it, that it's to our control sample that matches the rest of the panel for texture and color and everything. And then they'll, they'll stain over it and seal over it at that time.
Are the additional five thousand dollars that you're asking for, is that related to the walls?
Not at all, not at all. No, everything was listed in the memo. The majority of the cost was basically for additional electrical outlets and the, the blocking or the backing material. Every, it's, it's metal studs and drywall. So any place that you would anticipate that you're going to mount something on the wall during the next seventy-five to a hundred years, you have to put the plywood blocking behind there. And again, the, the majority of the cost was, was due to the blocking and the additional electrical outlets.
Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel?
Was part of the reason maybe that those things were overlooked, was it a kind of crunch timeline to get this?
No, those weren't, those weren't overlooked. Again, initially, if you remember, we had the architects down. They toured both facilities. They toured Station Two and they toured the public safety building. And again, we went over all these components. But again, as you go through and start looking, again, for future use, it's cheaper to do it now than to tear it down and put blocking in later or to try to add outlets, cable, and network later on, once the walls are already up.
So it's more typical punch list type stuff?
True. And, and we are set for April sixteenth. Again, we're thirty-one days away to do the punch list. And so after talking with the contractor and the architect, there's probably a good possibility that there's going to be one last change order again, probably, probably smaller than this amount. But they said it's pretty typical, once we do the punch list on the sixteenth, that we may come up with a few more items, so.
Any other questions for the chief? Very good. Thank you, chief. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of that motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries seven zero. Item M, presented for city council's consideration is a request to authorize the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen road salt purchase agreement between the city of Muscatine and the city of Davenport. Annually, the city of Davenport acts as the lead agency for the purchase of rock, road rock salt for communities in the Quad Cities area. In order to move forward in purchasing the road rock salt, the city of Davenport is requesting that all members of the consortium secure the approval of the respective legislative bodies. The agreement stipulates that fifty percent of the order be paid between July first, two thousand and twelve, and July tenth, two thousand and twelve. Once the salt is delivered, the respective communities will be invoiced for the balance. RFPs for the salt purchase will be sent in late March for early April. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama, and I need a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Bob? Any discussion, counsel?
We're purchasing one barge this year instead of two.
Actually, what we're doing, we, we had reduced it a budget dime, down to one. But we're going to split that one barge with the counties. So actually, we're only purchasing a half a barge this year. And this will probably save us an additional forty to fifty thousand dollars.
Great job there.
Well, thank Mother Nature.
Voice vote, folks. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item N, presented for city council's consideration is a request to install historic district signs for the West Hill and downtown historic districts. The purpose of the signs is to define the boundaries of the two historic districts. A total of eleven signs will be installed with the assistance of roadway maintenance staff. The total cost of the signs will be paid from, paid from private funds. The traffic committee unanimously supports this installation of the signs. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
It's approval.
I'm going to give that to Jeanette. Second?
Second.
Second. Mark? Discussion, counsel? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item O, presented for city council's consideration is a, is a request for authorization to issue a purchase order for storm warning siren upgrades. The city has been awarded federal assistance under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the purchase and installation of twenty-three outdoor warning siren radio controllers. Danko Emergency Equipment is the sole source provider for the outdoor warning systems. Staff is requesting the issuance of two purchase orders. One will be in the amount of thirty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents for equipment, and the second for twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for installation. The total grant award is fifty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, with the city's match being fifteen percent or eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama, I need a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Scott? Counsel discussion. No discussion. All those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed nay? Motion carries seven zero. We're going to item fourteen. It's time for communication from council members. And we'll start with Mark?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Phil?
Nothing at this time.
Osama?
Yeah, I just have one question for Randy here. Do we have a date for the opening of the campus site?
About a week from Monday. A week from Monday.
A week from Monday. Okay. Thanks.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Jeanette?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Randy? It's been grueling, Your Honor, but we made it through. Fran, any comments? Very good. And nothing from me. Item fifteen, a request to enter into closed session for property acquisition. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Osama, at this time, folks, we ask that the chamber. Oh, we need a second.
Second, Your Honor.
Really moving fast. I'll give that second to Tom and a roll call. Osama? Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Bob?